All in favor?
Yeah, and councilor, I was just gonna mention that we could even reschedule those five minutes, depending on if your schedule's tight tonight.
Well, it's just, yeah, we just...
So I can do this next week.
And I'd like to make sure we hit the important...
Our business is no longer as the... No. If there's anybody on this council that probably knows it all already.
Yeah, you're set up to go right now, or are you?
Let's do it.
Let's go with your presentation.
All right. I'd like to say, they put a little bit of money into organizing this little presentation, and it was just, rather than me trying to duplicate their slides, I just thought I'd bring their slides. So, we are gonna fly through here.
Tyler's getting it.
Yeah, he's getting that. I don't know what button to push here. Hold on. Okay, here we go. So specifically, this is their business recycling strategy. And the reason for that is because more than half of Lethbridge's waste that goes into the landfill is business waste. Now, for us, in our town, that's not the case. So this same strategy kinda has to be our residential strategy. And that's a bit bigger of a problem. You know, they realized with the taxpayers, if they impose a residential strategy before, especially before they tackle businesses, it would have some political pushback. But if this doesn't go like they're planning, and I'll show you what they're planning here in just a second, they are gonna have to really crack down on residential as well. So anyway, just to zoom in on a couple of things, yes, they have a strategic plan. This is their percentages. So you can see there, the ICI is industrial, why I forget the acronym, commercial and institutional. So that's what ICI, C and D, I should have these memorized, construction, I think it is, and demolition, that's right, construction and demolition. And then residential is the 23% for them. So, but here in Cartston, I mean, our residential would be probably, I'm guessing, 80%, or more. So we're very residential. So then they have these three levels, I just wanted to share with you. They're calling them the green light, the yellow light, and the red light. The green light is where nobody's, it's not legislated, there's no policy, they're just educating, creating awareness, they're hoping to get the citizens on board. And they estimate that that's gonna solve about 10 to 30% of their problem. Then, they're gonna impose some economic sanctions. They're talking about, you know, differential tipping rates, et cetera. These are the yellow light strategies, and they're hoping that'll offset 20 to 50%. And then, of course, there's the big bad wolf, where government sticks his feet right into your house and says, "Do this or else." And that's regulatory landfill bans, mandatory recycling, et cetera. And of course, they really hope that that will divert over time, all the way up to 75% of what's currently getting dumped into landfills. Now, believe it or not, their goal, their strategy is to impose all three of these. They wanna hit that 75% number. And because our waste, some of our waste gets diverted to their waste, to their landfills, these rules will directly apply to us on every ton we send their way. So we'll just kinda fast forward, and you can kinda get the ideas here. This is their projections on what they're trying to do, their targets on reduction of waste, which, by the way, this is in exact proportion to their growth strategy as well. So Lethbridge per land's to grow, and even with that growth, they plan to reduce their tonnage by these numbers. So by 2021, which is just a couple of years away, they plan to have, you know, what is that, a 20, 25% reduction. And then, by 2030, they hope to be all the way down there. And so, we're gonna show you here kinda what this looks like. And again, I'm gonna skip a lot of their details that's relevant to them. They went into what does their waste, you know, compose? And ours are probably similar. I can get you this presentation, by the way, if you wanna look these numbers over and just say, "Oh, okay, with building materials, where's this all going?" They have practices in place right now to separate this all out and try to recycle all this out separately, which means they're gonna impose on communities like us. If we show up with a truckload of building materials, they're gonna want that separated out, right? Because they don't just take it unsorted. So that's kind of a big burden on us. They're talking about, you know, just, again, their strategies, just fast forwarding here to where the rubber hits the road. So unfortunately, I don't have a way to fast work faster, so I'm flying through their whole thing to get to the big one, which is at the end here. Okay, this is another version of that, those three colors. The voluntary program, which they're calling Phase Two, they're in right now, Phase Two, where they're imposing their voluntary programs, they hope that that consists of, and then as they go up towards this red, where again, the government, the town imposes, you know, garbage bylaws that really start to restrict. And we'll show you what that looks like in percentages when we fly through. My apologies again, I wanted to shorten this, but I'm just gonna fast forward this. Oh, sorry, let me just back up to show you this. So again, voluntary programs, they have a waste diversion assistance promotion, they're offering technical assistance, they're gonna follow up, they have an education and awareness program. They're funneling money into these programs to help this green light effort. And then they get over here into the yellow. And this is starting to phase in now, but really, it's gonna crack down hard in 2019 and 2023. So those are the four years where the yellow stuff, they're yellow, they're kinda the, almost the strong arm methods really start to kick in. And then this is really where it gets down to, we're banning it, it's no longer acceptable. By 2024 into 2026, they hope to have the red light laws and bylaws in place. And again, I'm gonna show you what that looks like. This is the one I've been trying to get to. So this is the timeframe. If you look on the left of this graph, it shows the strategies they're hoping to impose in 2016. The current tipping fees have gone up to $75 per ton. Next year, they go up to $85, 2018, by 2018, they're in $95 per tipping. So you can see, that's a significant increase, just there, that represents almost 25% increase, and just in the next two years. So that's huge as far as dollars go.
Are they just recoupling their cost of fees? Or is that an imposition to discourage people from disposing?
Great question, excellent question. It accomplishes both, but it was specifically put in to discourage people from throwing out waste. That's what it was specifically for. Now, the reality is, they can use the money appropriately in their garbage budget. And that goes into how their landfills historically have been under managed. And so they recently have been told by Alberta Environment, "You've gotta come in here, and you've gotta fix what you haven't done right over the last 100 years." So today's taxpayer, today's ratepayer is gonna have to pay for what they didn't collect over the last 100 years. And, and then this is the worst part, they have to accommodate the fact that they haven't been working that collection into their rate for the last 100 years. So they need to start now, or they're gonna have that same problem 80 years from now. So what they're having to do is they're having to double ding the citizen, the taxpayer, the ratepayer, to pay for 100 years of misappropriation of funds. They didn't set enough aside for, you know, replacement of infrastructure, or, you know, et cetera. And so they're having to make up for that. And now, they wanna reverse that mistake by not letting it happen moving forward. So they're saying, "Hey, we gotta add a little something to pay for landfill remediation over the next 100 years, once we close a landfill." So anyway, that's what this is doing. But you can see how the green strategies start now, some of the yellow strategies start now, and then we get more yellow strategies kicking in next year, and then into 2018. Surcharges start to affect things in 2019. And then, by 2020, you're starting to see the effects of their red light regulatory programs. This is gonna be pretty serious stuff. So how does this affect us in our landfill? Again, right now, Lethbridge's policy only affects us for the tonnage we direct there. So if we don't, if we can get our act together, and we don't send anything to Lethbridge, none of this really affects us. However, they are looking for, and they've solicited, kind of some regional compliance. So they would love, and makes their policies look a little nicer, if all the other surrounding areas have an echoed system, something similar. And, you know, the waste authority is definitely looking hard at this, and what that's gonna amount to for us. But right now, frankly, all we care about is if we can get the grass clippings out of our landfill, we're fine for a couple more years. We might just be kicking the can down the road, however. And by 2020, we might be looking at some of these red light policies, or we're not gonna comply to some of the Alberta legislation. So, yeah, any questions from... I know I flew through that very fast, by the way, so...
Maybe more comment. I think the authority, the waste authority of which we are part, needs to take a very serious look at this because of the tipping fees. Every ton that we send over there is very costly, and is reflected in a requisition that we have at a municipal level. So I really feel it behooves the authority to come up with some sorts of plan in order to figure out how to divert the recyclable out of their landfill. Of course, it's back on the municipality at this time. But should there not be a more collective effort from the authorities themselves?
Absolutely. In fact, to answer that exact question, a regional strategy is preferred, right? So that all of the communities are doing the same thing. That way, you know, no one municipality looks like the heart knows. Specifically, what you're talking about in our landfill, you know, kinda cleaning up and separating, we have really nothing in place to do that at our landfill. So all of that has to happen at each transfer station. And then, honestly, what it falls back to is, I mean, the teeth of the authority is in each municipality. So if we're gonna have any kind of a law, or restriction, or whatever, it's gonna be imposed by this council on this town. And, you know, if there's a problem, ultimately, all the authority can do is just raise our rates. That's all they can do. So if they're having a problem, and they need to push back on the municipalities, they're just gonna say, "Hey, that requisition's gotta go up." And so that's...
You see all what the authority can do, but maybe it's the philosophical mindset.
You bet.
Than it changing.
You bet.
Because if you change it to say, "An authority is there to look at all waste and how to dispose the best way of waste in a way to protect our landfill for the long run," then maybe it becomes them as a thinking tank to help us accomplish that goal.
You bet, you bet.
It's a change of way of thinking.
Right.
Bill, I don't know what kind of an education system that the city of Lethbridge uses, but I can tell you, in all their open meetings, they've been totally rejected on this recycling. And in the residential areas, they don't want it.
Right.
It's scrubbed out, so, and it's been shot down. So if they saw these kind of figures, you know, what's the matter with the city of Lethbridge? You know, why are they not introducing this kind of stuff to their citizens?
Yeah, when they created this policy, they told us, Mayor Spearman, anyway, he reported it. He said, "When they created this policy..." Now, remember, this is for the commercial side, right? This is for the business sector. But they were anticipating that the mandatory recycling, the curbside pickup, would actually go through. And of course, there was public pushback. So really, there's only one way. You can hope to get it in and see, or, you know, like, I mean, you can hope that people will go along with it, or you can just say, "We're sorry, this is now the way it is." And then you impose that fee through some legislation.
Well, we're gonna have to, you know, address this further, you know, further.
Oh, yeah, yeah. This is just an introduction to what they're doing.
You can vary.
Absolutely.
So, do you have continuing access to these slides?
I do, I do. And also, I networked with all the people that are part of this team, and they said, "Not only can we access what they have here," I mean, they were happy to just share this with me, right? "But we can get access to their entire education program." We can get, you know, all of their social media campaigns, they're happy to share. "We don't have to pay, it's free, they're just happy to give us all."
I think it's valuable to take to your cheap mountain solid waste authority.
Absolutely.
And I say, we need to address this, I think. So appreciate your presentation.
You bet.
I've asked Jeff if he'd stay a little longer, so that we could cover 7E, the pool renovation. I'm sorry, Jeff, that we're doing that to you, but...
No apology necessary.
You're very up and expert on the continuation of the pool. Appreciate the big E drawing we've done.
So do you want me to speak to that?
Yes, if you could do that. And then you, what kind of a motion or recommendation do you want, or do you want to look at?
Probably don't need anything unless, you know, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
What the drawing you have in front of you, if you look at it the way the text is written, the top is "South," okay? Just so we know which way you're facing, if you're reading it the way the text is written. What you will see here is what the proposal is for the pool renovation and addition. So there's a 2,170 square foot addition on the north side, which is what we're calling the control area. So this is where everyone enters the building, and it's where those who are not swimming go out to the side, so they would go out to the east through the corridor. And those that swim go back into the existing building. And the women's change room is immediately past the control area, and the men's is, they're in the same place they are now. And then, the vestibule for entrance now, it will become the chlorine room. That's some of the big changes there. So we just wanted to point out a couple of things in that, in the addition, you can see we've added things like a staff, or a training room, or a first aid room, places for lessons, if there's some out-of-the-water training that they can have. We added an area for concession. Now, how that goes forward and how we run it will remain to be seen, but we wanted to make sure the real estate was there and available. And then, just our staffing and office areas, and public washrooms and the mechanical. So the mechanical for the addition will be completely separate than the mechanical for the existing building, just so we're not having to try and core through walls and extend that through. In the renovation of the existing part, every load-bearing wall stays. So we're not trying, we're trying not to mess around with anything that's currently load-bearing and change that at all. We wanna just strip the place down and rebuild it. Obviously, the configuration changes, non-load-bearing walls move. And it looks a little bit different at the end of it. The women's change room takes a little bit of the men's change room. The old vestibule and entrance becomes private change areas in the men's change room. And we added family change rooms in each, and also handicap washrooms in each. So that's where a lot of that extra space is taken up. So there's still your regular washrooms and toilets and urinal and showers, but we have a handicap and a family washroom in each change room, as well as two public washrooms in the control area, and a handicap washroom and staff washroom in the control area.
Can I ask you something, Jeff? In light of all the controversy that is going on in the province with the...
The transgender discussion, things like that, yep.
Yes. I am wondering if there is enough there that would allow us to abide by the new provincial regulations?
So we are not asked to abide by any different regulation right now? Is it forthcoming? Maybe? You know, I certainly appreciate we should be open to it. As I've looked at this, and Jill and I had a little discussion about it before, if we needed to provide gender-neutral change facilities or washrooms...
The family room could be used as that.
Well, the problem with the family room is you have to go either into the men's or the women's shower to get to that, and so you've now identified your gender, because you either went to the men's or women's change room. So in the control area, there is a handicap washroom around there that could be fitted to be a gender-neutral washroom. Also, the...
I wouldn't want to see the building having to be done...
I mean, the handicap washroom actually is, by its design, a gender-neutral washroom.
Right, yeah, it is.
It's a common washroom.
But doesn't include showers.
It does not, that is true. And, you know, that becomes, if you're gonna separate off washrooms, showers, lockers, change, you've now committed to a pretty significant change in your facility. That's a pretty big deal. And that's a tough thing to plan for if it happens to be mandated. That's a tough deal.
Yeah. I suppose to add, you know, more privacy stalls wouldn't be too big of an issue in each of the change rooms.
Yeah, so they take a lot of space. You can see the men's have five private change areas, the women's have four, but then there's also the washroom, the family room. So there's effectively six in the ladies', and five, six, seven in the men's, just based on the amount of space we have, and not moving load-bearing walls. That's the other issue. So it's not an abundance, but one would hope that as people cycle through, it's enough. I know, like with my kids, they go with the swimsuits on.
Right.
They head down there just with their shorts over, and down they go.
Yeah, most parents are doing that now.
That's pretty common.
Yes, it is.
The other thing we talked about was potentially even having, outside the control area in the storage room, maybe there's some outside lockers there, that if the kids are already going down change, they can just throw their stuff in an outside locker, and they don't even need to go through the change rooms necessarily.
So the new addition, does that go right up to the sidewalk on the street down?
It's back just a bit. It's still back a little bit.
So the front will be grass or gravel?
There'll be a little strip between the building and the street sidewalk, yeah, okay.
Jeff, when we talked about this, the last time, I think we talked about the buildings idea, we were talking about doing it in phases.
Yep.
And I don't see how this could be phased.
So what the plan would be is the control area would, the addition could be done while the pool is open. Because we would continue to use where the new chlorine room would be, that would continue to be the entrance to the pool. So the addition could be completely done while the pool's in operations. And then, as soon as we close, we have to get to the next phase.
So it looks like the janitorial closet just remains wide open all the way across, and we'd have a woman's access, or how?
Sorry, I'm trying.
So, yeah, imagine, we don't have a control room, so that's going.
Yeah.
Right, where they're coming in, they're entering into the new chlorine room.
Yeah.
For now, that doesn't exist.
You wouldn't touch any of the existing building while the addition's being...
There's something in proportion that will be added on.
Existing right now is where the, you know, through the chlorine room, because probably where the family change room is. The checkered walls are the load-bearing permanent walls that wouldn't change.
Gotcha.
The dark black walls are walls that are changed or added.
So I had assumed that we were gonna renovate first and then add.
No, we're gonna be, probably, we're gonna add and then renovate.
Now, the gym will stay in the basement?
Yeah, Wendy City Gym can stay in the basement. We're gonna have some, what's the word, we have to decamp them for a short amount of time, because all the HVAC, all the plumbing, everything's gotta be changed and moved, and it's all hanging from the ceiling in the gym. We may have to figure out how we can accommodate them in another location, whether we lease a space for two or three months, or six months, or whatever we have to do. We are going to inconvenience the gym, but we'll figure out exactly what that looks like. Because really, it's just that they hang the plumbing from the ceiling down there. And then maybe the plumber says, "Hey, you give me a week, and I'll run everything, and I'll hook it up in the mechanical room later." Potentially, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But that's the hope, is that we can, I don't wanna move everything out of there for a week. If it takes a good long while to move all that equipment, disassemble it and reassemble it. But yes, they will be interrupted. So why I have it at council is, we need to, the architect is ready to move ahead to do construction drawings. And the reason I want those soon is then I can get it quoted. And we keep hearing about this federal infrastructure money that's coming. I'd like to have a shovel-ready project to apply for that infrastructure funding when it comes out, if that's a priority of council. But I certainly wanna get it to the quote stage, because, to be frank, we have some money reserved, but is it enough? I don't know. We've made a number of assumptions about what the renovation's gonna cost, but...
What is that assumption?
About three quarters of a million.
Where do we sit with the school right now?
So... That's what the addition and the rentals?
And again, it's simply, Doug Bergen gave me a bit of a per-square-foot rental cost and a per-square-foot new construction cost. That's what we have reserved, we have that available. My gut feeling is we're gonna see it about 1.1, 1.2. That's kinda my feeling after we get it quoted. But indications are it's a good time to go out to tender.
So, Jeff, in that case, if we are satisfied with the drawing, the way they are, which seems to be a good change from what we have today, it's more compliant with the health department, and we should maybe have a motion to allow you to move forwards towards your construction drawing.
Maybe we could do that, we could...
You can, yeah. You approve the budget with the money for the project, so I take some assumed consent there.
Well, it would have to be said that it is in principle at this time, since we do not know exactly. But to move to the next phase...
There could be a motion to proceed with the rule abilities.
Have a motion to approve the layout as presented, so, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
If you'd like to make that.
Yes, so I would make a motion to recommend to council to accept the drawings and to move into the construction drawing phase.
That sounds like a good option, okay. You got that? Hey, Mayor Cronin, I want you to approve the drawing, all in favor of that? All right, anybody opposed to it? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, are we happy on it? Please put the...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I wonder, yeah, I just don't know if it's worth having a look
for that, you know, gender control concern.
Well, it's just something to think about.
Then I think that still can be maybe discussed with the construction.
I don't know, like, if we approve this, and then we're done, then...
What we need to figure out is maybe try to understand where the government is going with that, when it comes to public venues.
So I would suggest, Councilor P. Wood, that nothing is in stone until it's literally in stone.
Right.
And so, we can get quotes, we'll get a good idea where we're at, if we still need to tweak a few things within the parameters of the load-bearing walls. I think that option's still there for us.
Right.
Jeff, have you checked in what Lethbridge is doing with Henderson and their new West projects?
I haven't heard anything that municipal facilities are considering this school legislation yet. It hasn't hit the radar anywhere I've seen now. Would I be surprised if it hits the radar? No, I wouldn't. But so far, there hasn't been any buzz about it that I've heard, not to say I'm into no on everything, but I haven't heard anything yet.
Which is okay, amen.
Or convert truth.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, just before I go, if your agendas are a little bit late on Friday, they'll get there. But Tyler and I are driving back at noon from Red Deer, so if it's, I have to go over him and put a few things together when I get home, then maybe it's a little later on Friday.
We'll be forgiving.
Have a safe ride.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Have a good week there.
Okay, council, what I think we would like to do now is move back to 6A and take, limit ourselves to 15-minute discussion. Is that okay, if we can do that?
Was that motion voted on?
Yes, it was, we voted on it. And I think everybody...
We had a delay over here.
Oh, he was in for it, okay. Yes, we voted on the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. So, council, remuneration, I'm assuming, I'm not gonna read all of what we approved, we've done that, and I assume you've all read that. The mayor has written some information on that, and maybe what we could do is deal with that first. Mayor Cronin, if you'd like to address your recommendation.
Yeah, it's a different, one that starts out a different approach during remuneration for council reasons.
It's right after the...
It's right after, yeah, it's right after the axia stuff, I think, yeah.
It says council remuneration on the file there, so...
Oh, okay. You wanna look at mine, and if you can just address, I'll see if I can find it.
All right. So there are some questions that Jeff has still... If you look at some of the questions that Jeff has, other questions, many of them are there to help us, and I realize, can I refer back to what I proposed or thought? Essentially, the way I looked at it is, what does that remuneration that we are obtaining right now represent in terms of hours of work? And if they represent, and all the rates is not exactly right, so, but I accept that for now. Right now, we could say that the remuneration we're getting represents about nine to 10 hours of committee work, or about that. And so what we need to look at from that perspective, which does not mean it will be the perspective, it's one perspective, is to try to say, okay, does our number of hours that we work at a different committee represent that amount of work? And if it does, then it's a fair remuneration. But if it's more than that, then we may be not compensated properly for what we are doing. So the nine hours is a base according to what we are getting today. So then, what we need to decide is for those who have to go, like councilor and men's, or sometime, they're self-councilors, any of us sometime have to really give more than that nine hours amounts towards our committee, and we all fall into that category sooner or later.
And sometimes we're not giving that much.
And sometimes we're not. So that's what we have to decide, is nine hours the base, and we accept that as a base. And from there on, we decide, okay, if we... And from there on, we decide, okay, if we, if we are indeed giving more than nine hours, then should we look at a per hour, which is right now about $36 an hour. It's about what it is based on the per diem we're receiving.
Can I ask a question? Has there been some, has it been a problem with what we've been doing?
It's just because we look at the remuneration, it's just the time to really look at it as what could be the system or the base on which we want to look at our remuneration. And then what we can, it doesn't say that what we're getting is appropriate or not. It just says right now that's what it looks like. And then what we need to look at is if we accept that kind of reasoning, is what happened in a month that we're not doing any work, so we are paid for it, but then does that mean that we compensate with those months that we don't do work for the little extra that comes our way, that is, the parade, the photo ops, the news media once in a while, or whatever it might be, and say, you know what? It's a fair, it's a fair compensation for the months that we are really not working. It's just a way to look at it. It doesn't mean it's right, doesn't mean it's wrong, it's just a way.
My, my only concern with that is that it breaks it down in a very transparent way.
Yeah.
But then it becomes an hourly checking that you're really watching on an hourly basis.
Checking it off on our calendars.
Yeah, and I mean, that's not a big deal as far as like checking it off in your calendar, but it does become a, a question more of, if it's done on an hourly basis, there's many meetings that I've been to where it's a five-hour meeting and I bill it for a half a day because there's an hour of wasted time or whatever in there. And maybe I shouldn't be doing that, maybe that's part of the other side of that equation. But I think all of us here at this table probably donate extra time that is not being included in our compensation.
That is why we have the conversation, isn't it?
It is. My, my concern would just be is that this might be an influence to a higher cost because now you're keeping track of it every one of those hours. That's just my only concern with that.
I had the same concern. I don't wanna be, you know, punching a time clock every time I, you know, go to a meeting or every time I volunteer to do something. You know, some, you know, some things, you know, it's just, you know, it creates more work and then you have to be paid to keep track. And I don't know, I mean, really, you know, why, why? Okay, go ahead.
But the issue of them, the reason why I wrote that is because I heard so many times councillors that said, but you know, we have to do something for those of us who work on committees that are six, seven, eight hours long. But maybe they have also committees that only meet once every three months. And so how do, how do we create that balance that is a fair balance for all of us? Or are we satisfied with the status quo?
Is that kind of balanced out by the committees that we're on? Like, I don't know, I've never actually sat down and looked at it.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, Councilor Barbers, because if, if we change them up once in a while, you know, a couple of times during the, during our term, then everybody's going to eventually be working on some of those longer ones. You know, I know councillor Green, councillor Emmens, they have some of those pretty long meetings there, seven or eight hours, aren't they? By the time you travel and got there, you know, and then maybe you change those up. I don't know, I haven't, I personally haven't got a real problem with the status quo, that's my feeling. I mean, I have, I now have a longer one that's five, sometimes six hours, plus my other stuff. And I'm not really too concerned that I'm doing a little, little extra and I don't know that anybody else is, you know.
I mean, I heard it many times.
I really do like the transparency part this puts to it. I mean, it makes it very, very transparent.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
But it's not the only model, there are many different models, that is a model.
I think what you're telling me, and I don't have a problem with this, is that when we, when we get to these other questions that we haven't answered yet, such as like attending parades and things like that, to me, it's kinda fun. And I feel, I feel bad, you know, charging to say, have fun or to have, have the, you know, the mayor's luncheon or something like that. Why should I, why should I get paid twice, you know, like to have to do it? And what you're saying is that a lot of our committees basically don't meet much in the summertime. And so if we couldn't use that summer money that we're being compensated anyway to, to cover things like our, our attendance at parades and stuff like that, so. And I don't know how the rest of you feel, I just, that's just.
That is, that is an aspect I think that we could definitely take a look at for sure.
Well, I think if we were to look at it as an honor to be a part of parade, then maybe the money that we're not getting in per diem would allow us to do more in parades around the region. We would have to pay the remit, but it would be an honor rather than a per diem kind of issue. But that needs to be discussed.
Yeah.
Well, that's right, because some of those parades, when you're going out of town, they have luncheons and you're gone for a long time.
They are.
That's a long day too.
But that is, that is why I was saying, in the way I looked at it, if we look at it that in July, August, and December sometime, there are no meetings.
Yeah, so, so, you know, going to the, you know, other questions, what do you, let's just, let's just hit those while, while it's hot. On the, on the parades, what is your feeling about parades? I mean, some, like you say, some may take longer than others.
I think you could make a very strong argument that, for example, the Carston argument, the Carston Parade is a political parade.
We could exposure.
You could make, you could make that argument.
You have voted for it.
You could decide vote for it.
Sure, but like, for example, the Lethbridge Parade.
That's a different one.
I don't consider, to be honest, I don't consider that a great honor. I don't consider it, it's a, it's a bit of a chore for me to go to that one. But going to the Raymond one or some of the other ones around in our communities where there's people there that we know, where we are drawing, helping to draw people to our community maybe, getting our community more exposure, then I think there's, we're providing a service and a value of those. Which is why we typically usually send a couple of people or one or two people to one of those ones, right?
Don't kid yourself that you don't get exposure in Lethbridge.
I'm not saying that we're not getting exposure there. I'm saying I don't feel it an honor to be in the Lethbridge Parade.
Feel more of a chore.
It's a chore for me to go there to do it.
Well, it, it is for anybody to go there, but at the same.
But it's just original strength, right?
We are, we are advancing our community.
I'm saying here. I'm not saying don't go to it.
We're supporting the city of Lethbridge in their, in their, in their parades and so forth, and I think that's very important.
See, and they send, they send councillors to our parade.
Okay, but here, here is what we need to look at, the number of parade. In the past, we always used to have six. A cast is $500 rental for a carriage, $3,000. So what we need to decide, how many parades do we really want? We are part of the Moment Trail, so really, truly, we should have Sterling, McGrath, Raymond, Carston for sure. Lethbridge because it is original one and it's a little bit what it is. And then we have to decide, do we do the Pincher, the Pincher Creek one and the Fort MacLeod? So those make seven at this point. If it is seven we want, then we need to have seven in the budget. If that is what we feel is very important for us to be there to represent ourselves in the region, and so be it. Is a Pincher Creek one the one we want to keep or is a Fort MacLeod one we want to keep? Is there a choice or do we want both?
I had a discussion with the Pincher Creek mayor about this very thing at the last horse meeting that I was at. And I got to know him quite well over the couple of years here. And I didn't tell him that we were having this discussion, I just asked him how he felt. And he felt that them attending our parade was a very important thing and us attending theirs was a very important thing. And he brought up the same aspect, that we're a region where we need to support each other in the tourism aspect and everything because there's a lot of people from Carston that go. I've been in the Pincher Creek parade twice and I have all kinds of people hollering out to me saying, hi, Councilor Barnes, look. And there's lots of people from, from town that go there and the same thing in Fort MacLeod. I was surprised how many people, when I was in that parade a couple of years ago, that were there from, from Carston. So there were definitely, I think there's definitely a benefit.
Yeah, I definitely think it's worth, worth going.
Yeah, go ahead. Question is, why do we, why do we have to use a revenue carriage all the time?
We don't, I mean, that's one thing that we do because it is something that Carston advertises and it's an advertisement for the museum and maybe, maybe we need to hit them with that aspect to say, this, you're getting some publicity out of this.
So getting publicity, but you also have to realize that there is a cost and there's also the fact that while they're doing that for us, they might not have a wedding, they might not have the revenue from the town, from their own business, so.
It is a business too.
I mean, for them, it is a very important business. And they have a, they have a summer student and they have a full-time paid.
All I'm saying is I see the county using the Reeves car, you know, it's got a little convertible that's.
Well, it has a vintage car.
Yeah.
Which we don't have.
We used to use a lot of Harvey Wolf's.
Well, if you want to look at a different model.
I mean, that could be another discussion for another day. I think the discussion right now, you know, is on the per diems. My feeling is that, you know, maybe, maybe we get a per diem for parades out of town, but skip the one for Carston, would that?
I've never charged for the Carston Parade.
I never have either.
I don't think anybody has.
No.
It is automatically given. We do up Carston Parade per diem.
We get it whether we like it or not.
So maybe, maybe that we need a recommendation to council to decide that that is a gift to the town of our time and a thank you to the citizen.
Well, I think in that case, I feel it is an honor to be there at that parade as a town president.
All right, so.
So would that be, would that be?
I think that's a great idea.
I would rather not make that recommendation.
I, I move that we recommend to council that we don't get a per diem for the Carston Parade.
Okay, but for.
But for the other parades out of town that we do.
Okay.
At a mileage.
I'd like to.
Friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Sure.
Other parades that we have been asked by council to attend.
Yes, yeah, that we are assigned to.
We don't voluntary.
Right, right, we don't charge for, do on our own, but if we're assigned to a parade.
Right, exactly. If we're assigned to that parade.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of that?
Jill, you got the amendment?
Did you catch it?
All in favor?
All right, okay, so we recommend to council.
I won't miss what I didn't know was getting.
Nobody tell that.
I like that.
We can note that. Okay. We got time for one, one more item there on that we can hit or we, or we move on? Okay, should per diems be voluntary or compulsory? Do you understand what, what they're asking there? In other words, if you go to a parade and you're assigned to go to the parade, you're, you're, you can't decide not to submit your claim or whatever?
Okay. I feel, I feel pretty strongly about this, that if there's a per diem, then we take it. And we discussed this a year ago, that if you don't feel you wanna keep that per diem, then you can make a donation to a charitable organization in the community, to the pool or whatever in your name. And I think that's how we handle that.
Okay.
That's my feeling on that one.
Yeah, I also feel that if we don't, it really does skew the budgets appropriately. And we need to know as a council what it costs to run, you know, the executive.
Well, it's well spoken. Now, what did they?
That seems to be a consensus.
One of the biggest translators of that policy.
I think the consensus around the table is that the per diems should be compulsory. I would just ask a reminder that, to remind me to do that.
To do up your sheet.
To do up a sheet because sometimes, yeah, I can be absent-minded on that, so.
Just sometimes.
Maybe Jill make a note to administration to remind the councillors of what things that they need to charge the per diems for and so that, you know, that they, if they neglect to turn in a per diem, they're saying, hey, you need to turn in the per diem for this.
So, yeah. Could you suggest something? One in a packet we have, councillors put in your reports, you know, your committee reports, let's add, put in your per diem report or paper. So there'll be a reminder after that.
Let's put it in place. Your monthly, your monthly reports for your.
Every end of the month, we have a reminder to do our committee reports and at the same time, send us a reminder to do our expenses.
And what they, what they are too, what expenses.
And it would be better for administration, at least, and not definitely chase after us.
Because I, you know, because sometimes, like I say, I'm, in, in the past, I haven't even, like, for instance, parades, I didn't even know at the beginning what, that I was supposed to turn in a per diem for the parades, it wasn't until later on.
You should do that double because you had to push a cart.
Yeah.
The manual labor fee.
So that's good. I think, I think, let's, let's continue our discussion on this later on. I think we've covered, you know, some good items.
There is one item, can we look at item four under those questions?
Family, family business, or if you're combining family visit, visit business, should you charge the full mileage? I know one time after the A U M A, instead of coming home, we had to go to a family reunion and I think I charged half.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
Councilor Barbers has done the same thing.
I done the same thing when I had to have to do a medical appointment. Can, can I be put to my bed, to beds with, I don't make.
Don't go thirty cents.
I don't know if you had a look at the news lately regarding the senate expenses. And one recommendation that came out of the audit of those senators that maybe were not complying with the system the way it was supposed to work. One of the recommendations was exactly that one, that senators that were on business for the senate but also took the time to go visit family or to do other business or conference or speaking assignment, et cetera, not directed by the senate, could not charge the full amount for the trip, but only half of it because they would have gone and seen their families, they would have had to travel. So they're, they're piggyback, in other words. And I believe, I always believe that that's the appropriate way to deal with it. So that allows us, if we go to A U M A and we have family over there, to pay them a visit, which we would have loved to do anyways, but charge the town half because you really use your time for other purposes too.
Mayor, I totally disagree with that. I totally disagree.
Well, I do.
I have, I have a daughter in Silverman, which is just officer right here. I have a son that's in Edmonton, well, between Edmonton and Sparta, or Spruce Grove. For me to go to Edmonton and go to the conference as I'm supposed to be going in the evening times, if I cannot drive out and visit with my son.
It has nothing to do with that.
Well, that's basically what you said.
But if you stay the day before, or you go the day before to go visit your family.
So we're not talking here about a couple of hours' visit? We're talking about.
Yeah, like I think.
Going on the day, two days.
Or you head back to the.
Yeah, I agree with that, but if we're at that conference.
It's not to do with.
I have kids up there, I was like, I went to that F C M conference and I, I didn't stay at a hotel. I saved the town probably $1,500 because I stayed at my daughter's.
But that's a different model, right?
I paid, but I did charge the mileage.
Yeah, and that was...
But it was the given to...
Yeah, exactly.
So it's a fair system.
And I think, I think that, to be fair, I understand where Council Banker's coming from. If you happen to be there in that city where you've got family, you're only gonna...
Oh, I'm sure you're gonna be penalized.
You're gonna wanna go and visit for a couple hours.
And you shouldn't be penalized for that.
You shouldn't be penalized, no.
But don't get me wrong, it doesn't have to do within the time of the conference.
Yeah. Well, if you're going up there for a couple days early to visit the family before the conference, that's a different scenario.
And that's what I'm talking about, essentially, except not that. And that's what the senate was asked to be careful with. Not to give that impression that that double, piggybacking and double...
And so I think the answer to that question was, is if the specifics of that trip were made public, and shouted from the rooftops, is it something that would be able to withstand the scrutiny? Or would it be something you'd be uncomfortable with? I would feel really uncomfortable if I was going up to a meeting in Calgary, and build the full amount of meeting up in Calgary, and while I was there, I spent another day doing business the whole time there. Like, I'm basically piggybacking my business on town business. Which is why I only ever bill half of it. I bill half of it to my business and half of it to the town at that point, because I feel that's a fair and equitable split. And it's something that I don't think anybody in town would have a problem with. And I think it's the same thing when you're visiting your family. If you're there visiting your family, you take a couple hours one night and go out for dinner with them.
It's nothing to do with that.
That's a lot different than going up for two days and spending it, having a two-day vacation with your family before the conference and billing the town for the whole conference.
Or even if, you know, even if you stay a little later after the conference.
Or after, same kind of thing.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. If you're at the conference and you stay for an extra day or so, I don't think you should be feeling like, could you stay? Especially if you're on a weekend, you're gonna...
But you're not building the town for your hotel if you're staying...
No, you're not, you're not. But I'm saying, I don't think there's a problem with mileage both ways doing that. If you're gonna stay for an extra day on a Sunday or something like that, you still owe them the money. You gotta come home anyways. It's no big deal staying, but that's my feeling.
Now, I think where the senate got into trouble is, you know, they would go for a one-day conference and bill the taxpayer for three days, two of which they'd be visiting family.
Right.
So I think, there's a couple of aspects here that really concern me. Number one, who is, who's the police finding out if they stayed an extra six hours?
It has to be yourself to...
It's ourselves.
So I'm not sure how enforceable it is. Second, my other concern, there's a budget for a trip to Calgary, and let's say it's like a one-night hotel. If you stay for three days and you pay for your other hotel, the mileage is the same. You know, if you're running all the way up to Red Deer and then back, and then you're billing that whole, "Why'd you go to Red Deer?" Yeah, I can understand why the taxpayer would say, "What's this Red Deer trip? You went to Calgary." So I would say, "No, that mileage to Red Deer's on you. Your extra hotel room's on you. But if you want to stay up there for three months, I don't care." You know, like, we are gonna pay you for one trip to Calgary and back. And that's what, for the sake of the executive budget, yeah. I think as long as we say, "Hey, we're going anyway." The fact that you stay another day, by the way, I'll speak for my experience. I would only visit that sister in Edmonton if I was going to Edmonton anyway. So I'm not gonna make a special trip up, but since I'm there, I don't see why there would be any kind of a disgruntled taxpayer based on, "I was going anyway."
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to throw another wrench, just for the sake of the conversation. We always say we're going to be very careful with taxpayers' money. That always has been our objective, all of us. So let's look at it from, if we were carpoolsing together, we save a lot of money to the town, right? But if we go two days earlier because we want to visit family, now we cannot carpool. So are we not incurring an extra cost to the town because of our own personal business? Just throwing another wrench?
And that actually is the reason why I've only ever built half when I do that.
Yeah.
Is because I've always felt like the mileage part of it is, quite often, especially if it's Edmonton, is a pretty significant part of the bill. And if I've combined my business to it by only, if there's a bunch of us going up there, if there's only one of us going up, you're going up to see, to a conference that you're representing the town, and you're the only person going up there? I see no difference. But if we're going to an AUMA conference, and all seven of us are going, and we're taking five vehicles, there is a very significant increase in cost to the town by all of us taking our own vehicle.
But you know what? I disagree with that, that almost input of carpoolsing too. Because there's certain things that my wife needs, certain things that I need personally, and I'm not gonna have a car owner people subjected to that kind of stuff. That's why I take my own vehicle. Counselor Barnes is the same way, he gets carsick. And you have to be, have your eyes on the road. But you, some people have different things. I do not think that we need to be mandatory carpoolsing.
Well, we've already decided that question. We don't need to propose mandatory.
We already decided we will not have that.
We will not have mandatory carpoolsing.
But we also said we will be...
I think they were just putting that in, you know, as a consideration for charging mileage. As that if you're, you know, going up and you're spending time with family, you know, maybe an extra day or two, you could have carpooled. You know, I mean, you know, there's other reasons, there's other reasons for not carpoolsing, and I think we're good with that. And maybe this is a case where, you know, we have to judge. You know, like, we talked, we just talked about having mandatory, you know, submitting our expenses. Maybe this is a case where we don't have to submit the mandatory, you know, where we take a little flexibility and say, you know, we'll leave a little bit to conscience on this. If you're taking your own car, one trip up to Edmonton or Calgary and back, you're entitled to that. But if you're visiting family or doing business, and you feel like that you don't want to charge, you only want to charge half, then that's more than fair as well. And that would be a fair way to do it.
Mr. Chairman, at forty-five cents a ton, you don't even pay for the gas you use in your vehicle. So that's, you know, you're putting out a lot of money.
That's not true.
I don't think...
Driving a Volkswagen.
No, even driving my big...
I think that forty-five cents...
Forty-five cents a ton, more than gas.
More than gas.
Field for forty years. And I'll tell you something, forty-five cents doesn't even cost, doesn't even pay for your tires.
But it does pay for your gas.
More than pay for your gas.
I'm gonna throw something here. You know, we always worry about what it costs for gas. But that's only a very small part, you know, of your vehicle wear and tear. It also means, it costs, on average, just to keep, to maintain a car, on average, they say fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a year.
Just for service.
Any money that we get on a, on a gas payment, doesn't even begin to cover that. But I'm just saying that that money you get for your gas, for your mileage, you can't consider that just gas. There's wear and tear to your vehicle.
Absolutely. And that forty-five cents actually does, that forty-five cents actually does account for...
That's why they...
That's where that number comes from. It's not good.
I think part of the, there's a little bit of a public perception problem, perhaps. You know, when you got that weird councillor who's taken a fifteen-passenger bus all the way... Well, I'm just saying, all the way up and then coming back. But the reality, well, hold on, yeah, thank you. The reality is that if that same councillor took his motorcycle, spent a total of six dollars in gas, his per diem would be, like, his mileage plan would be the same. So the fact that he's taken his big stretched Hummer all the way up to the, you know, wherever he's going, that added expense has nothing to do with the town's reimbursement. He's not asking for extra just because his gas mileage was worse. It's the little two to order.
The only, the only time I think that becomes even that much of an issue is in the case when all seven of us or four of us are going, and we could be carpoolsing instead of taking four vehicles. Then it makes a difference. But you're absolutely right, as far as the cost to the town goes. Guy takes his motorcycle up there, same.
Well, he makes money on the town.
Well, I think we have not solved the issue.
Well, my recommendation on this would be that you're entitled, you're entitled, your mileage to and from your conferences, but...
But it's not mandatory to claim it.
We make this, we make this an issue that we don't have to mandatorily claim it if we feel like we don't want to. And that way, it leaves it up to your conscience, and nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna complain or question that.
I believe there is a check built in, right? At the end of the year, if somebody's claim is off the charts, then we sit down with them and look at it. But I'll tell you what, when the guy who's taken his vehicle more times than anybody else ends up at the end of the year asking for less money from the town, people need to stop beating that councillor up.
Yeah, but councillor...
Because the budget is skewed by other subsidies that that councillor is imposing.
Yeah, but therefore, we all need to be fair with submitting our claims.
Well, that's why I would say, the way to be fair is you just pay the kilometers there and back on whatever it was.
But I really honestly believe that councillor Creed has a good point. We entitled to a trip back and forth, and if you feel you have used a portion of your trip for personal reasons or for personal pleasure, then it's up to you to decide with yourself what you're going to charge the town.
In my case, the way I look at that specifically is, I'm generating revenue on some of my trips, and it is actually turned into a bit of a business trip. Now, if it's a trip where I'm just up there and back, and not doing a bunch of other business and stuff there, then...
You're entitled to claim your...
I can only claim a hundred percent of it on my tax return anyway, so I can either write it off on myself personally, or I can bill the town. I can't bill both.
So, but I would think regardless, we should try to, as much as we can, carpool for those who can carpool.
Yeah, I think, you know, as a recommendation, but...
Yeah, I think we do that.
And I try to do that, you know, anytime I can.
And we do, we use a...
I've taken you anyway.
And so has councillor Banker, and so has mayor Connor.
We have done...
We do that.
So if we carry on doing that with...
We okay with that?
I think that's good.
Alright, so councillor Carstston, he'd like to be able to get on the road so that he...
He's indicated he'd pack and buy.
That's pretty good indication.
That's right, good indication.
That's a slight gesture.
Just a hint.
Nobody else can leave.
Yeah, six, seven o'clock in the morning.
I guess one more person could leave this morning. Hold it down there, guys. So we'll excuse... No, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, nobody else can leave. I guess one more person.
Go careful.
Thank you.
See you all again.
So let's, we've covered that.
I was thankful. Councillor, so Thursday night, I won't be back in time for emergency services.
Yeah, that's Thursday for the fire.
Yeah, so if you can take care of that.
I will do that.
Thank you much.
I think in the time remaining, we should be able to cover everything else. We've got seven B tissue and organ donation awareness proclamation. And that, you know, if we choose to do that, it can be proclaimed a month, a week, or a day. So first of all, do we have, and these are, these are your recommendations, because we're in committee now.
Have we done this one before?
No, we haven't. I'm not aware that this has been done now. This was proposed by, I don't know how many of you know Laura Bevins, who just passed away.
Yes.
This is her daughter that's proposed this. So it does, it does kind of come to, come back to home. We have, we have local connections to do that, yeah.
Okay. As for any other recommendation to proclaim a week or a day for something special, we then are obligated as a town to put information out regarding the issue. It's not good to proclaim something if you are not going to be actively engaged to promote. So, or we proclaim, and we choose to promote, and we need to figure out how to do it, what we're going to do. But to just proclaim is not good.
I think we put out a campaign to really look at your driver's license and your organ donation, and back your driver's license, if you're, you know...
Because they all have them.
Exactly. And I, and I think we encourage people to look at that situation.
There's, there's a lot of specific information in this letter that could be disseminated into our town website and to the Facebook page.
So this is what we should do. If we do that, then we need to have a little bit of what do we intend to do and how we intend to do it, to which...
So that's what we have Sham for. He could come up with a letter from this or a little promotion.
So as a councillor, do we want to proclaim a period of time, you know, for...
You know, these days, one-day things don't do nothing.
But a week?
Most people are missing, but a month is too much, so I think a week is appropriate.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, you know, if we shouldn't have a policy on what constitutes sufficient reason? Or is it just, do we just decide year by year, day by day? Does it change year by year? Yeah, for instance, with this issue, I mean, this is a great issue, I would love to support this. Do I want to impose, I mean, let's just say, a whole month every year? Or that solid week each year? And if it's not worth doing on an annual basis, do we really want to tackle it? You know, is it our job to tackle it this one year?
I do like, I do like your recommendation for, you know, having, having a policy, like we have a donation policy on, you know, who will donate to, and has to impact, you know, the town, and has to, you know, be open to the town. And, yeah, maybe a policy on proclamations might be good.
I think, I think we should, on our webpage, maybe mayor and councillor has encouraged you to look at your, you know, your driver's license.
Yeah, well, it can also go in our paper, on the page on paper, it could go in our newsletter.
What kind of cost involved in something like this?
It's not the cost. The cost is the administrative cost.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not the cost per se, it's how willing are we as councillors then to promote that? Well, you know, and how do we do it? How is the promotion done? Because if we're not going to be actively engaged during that week, we as councillors, we decide that that's important to us, and we're not visible, and do something, then I am concerned that the proclamation, it was nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess the question I have is, what is the family going to do? Do they have a group of people who are working on this? Are they having an event? And if they are, we could be supportive by sending a councillor or two to the event?
We do not know.
You know, this is what we have to know. And this is coming up here within a little over a week, two weeks.
They have, I don't think they have specific...
Yeah, they have, it's in here, the sixteen, sixteen to twenty-third.
The week of the sixteen.
As the awareness, the week, right?
I agree, having a day, it might be a little too, it might be underkill. A whole month seems like overkill, so if you do anything, I would recommend a week.
I mean, if we recommend a week, then what we have to make sure is that there is some information regarding this on our website, at least, if nothing else, on all our media, and maybe have Corey put something on the channel and in a newspaper. If at least we do that and hammer it for a week, maybe then it becomes worthwhile. There is no doubt that an organ donation or a tissue donation is of great, great benefit to many, that could be in our community or out of the community. There is no doubt in my mind that is true. I'm a registered donor personally. But it's...
Except they won't take mine.
Well, it says ninety-three years old, they're donating. That was one old eyeball.
So we could have, you know, an instructor, you know, contact the, you know, the proposal. Let's just make a motion for a recommendation on this one. If I could just, if somebody would put a recommendation to you.
Yeah, I'll make the recommendation on this one. But I will disqualify it with, I'd love to see a policy just so in the future. But I'll, I will disqualify it with, I'd love to see a policy just so in the future, you know, we, we're pretty uniform, we stay
Okay.
Maybe a recommendation to administration to look at that, but a recommendation to council to declare that week, what is that, the
April 16th
16th to the 23rd, uh, as the organ and tissue donation awareness week, and to have our, our administration disseminate some information about that and encourage the citizens to
On all videos.
On our website.
And on all videos.
I, I don't, I want to comment on, on the, the Channel 32 thing, you know, sometimes when we, when we, if we pay to have things on Channel 32, I feel double guilty. I, I, sometimes I feel like, dang, you know, we charged it to the taxpayers, and so I feel a little guilt on that, and then, dang, we didn't pay Cory enough for his excellence, and so it's kind of a catch play too. I don't know about that, maybe we'll follow the administrative recommendation on that one.
We have a policy on, on, on lowering our flag.
We do, we do.
And we need to make a policy.
We do. So let's vote on this one, and then I'm going to ask for, for, for a, a motion or a recommendation for a policy too. So let's, let's vote on, on the Counselor Poy's recommendation to council to declare the week of April 16th to 23rd as a donation, organ or tissue donation, awareness week.
Yeah, okay.
So all in favor? Thank you, okay.
It's my own mother's birthday.
Perfect, okay. So, so, yeah, I'd like to make that other recommendation, I think we should vote on that one.
I'll make that recommendation.
The Counselor Poy moves that we
That we recommend that administration propose a proclamation policy.
Policy on proclamation, develop a proclamation policy on what things that we will and how they, how they will, you know, something has to impact the community or whatever, so, so, recommendation by Counselor Poy, recommend to council, or recommend to administration to develop a policy on making proclamations.
Well, and, and just kind of in there, I'd like maybe even an appendix or something that shows what, what's happening, what anyway, in our current town. Like, we declared November this, we declared April that, you know, I'd hate to say, well, we want to declare April, but we're already doing this
Well, there may be certain things that were already proclaimed, and, and that could be in the policy.
Yeah, I'd like to know what we
Yearly things and, and, and some criteria
Yes.
On, on what things we will accept as
That would go up in the policy.
As policy.
That is what I think the, the motion should read, that the criteria
Be stated.
Be stated, yes, I think so.
Okay, alright.
Friend the amendment. Yeah, all accepted.
That's good, so Jill, did you kind of get the gist of what we're talking about here? Okay, all in favor of that? Thank you, alright. So we have one other, uh, proclamation that's been promoted, caregivers, celebrating Caregivers' Week of May 1st, May 7th. We do have caregivers in our
All the way down, lots.
Lots of caregivers in our community. Kathy Jensen works on that through FCSS, uh, and they have, have a caregivers, uh, my brother's been highly involved in that. He took after, looked after his wife for years and years, so, um, yeah, this
There again, what are we going to do? What are we going to do to promote that?
And I think, I think we
Same as what we do with the
Probably we're through FCSS, and, and, and of course, this, this is a little farther off, May 1st to May 7th, so I think there's a little time to
Not much. We're not having a FCS meeting in April.
You're not?
No. We only have two things on the agenda, it'll be moved to May.
Something like this just kind of says to me, it's almost as though you would want to have lunch or something for caregivers. And I don't think there's time to plan anything like that this
Counselor Bangery can perhaps at least contact the FCSS coordinator and see if they want to work that through, say something we'd like Kathy Jensen to, and I don't, because I don't know who even, you know, I guess this came through FCSS, basically.
Well, it says up here.
Yeah, it was, it was presented to Jeff through, through FCSS.
But there's already, uh, a release here, immediate release.
Yeah.
Essentially
Go ahead.
Essentially, what I think for this one, what we need to do is, is to proclaim it, but to allow FCSS
To run it. To develop their release.
Develop the, uh, the activities
Yeah, whatever they want to do.
Related to that.
Yeah.
Or to the awareness that FCSS is a driver.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be
If that's what the FCSS wants
Wants to do.
I think we can proclaim, but they can, they can promote.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea.
Alright, so, so would anyone like to make a recommendation on this?
I, I recommend that we, recommend the council to proclaim that we're here, Caregiver Week, for the first seven, and have FCSS do the promotion, we'll do the proclamation.
Okay, alright, yeah.
Of the events.
Sounds a good recommendation, all in favor of that? Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, Red Crow College donation. Now, you have the, the donation policy on your drives. This, this request for donation does not fit our donation policy, but there may be a goodwill piece or a relational piece that might be appropriate, depends on how you feel about it. We could do an advertisement in their, their, you know, their college publication, so
We've done that for their housing.
So, you know, what is your, what are your feeling on that?
And/or donation of an item for auction, that's always appropriate, I think.
Yeah, that is something that I was thinking of, and my husband does native art, and I thought that could be a gift.
Another thing we could do, I, I know for communities in Bloom, we approached the Golf Course Association and asked them if they would donate a couple of passes, which they were happy to do because it provides means for their, you know, gets people out on the golf course, so, anyway, so
See, the, the purpose, it's a good purpose, it doesn't fit the donation policy.
Right.
However, we have done a precedent with the housing, uh, we put an advertisement in there
Yeah. If we do it as an advertisement, it, it doesn't really come under the donation policy, it comes under advertising
And so that's what we did last time, we put an ad, so, put a small ad from the town as congratulations.
So my, the question about that ad would be, would we get more out of maybe sponsoring a dance, which is also advertising, right? So I don't, I don't know what the rates are either, so it's really hard to decide.
I think if you take an ad, you limit yourself to an inch of a page or something like that, it's more, you control the
Right.
So the options are an ad, sponsoring a, a dance at the powwow, or you say
A gift. I mean, a gift.
What kind of a gift would be appropriate from the town in person? A pendulum blanket or something like that?
Sometimes towns have branded water bottles or backpacks or baseball caps.
Those are things you give away.
Well, yeah, but, you know, some people
You know, you could, like, something like, like, you know, the pass to the golf course, that's actually worth quite a bit, you know, if you give a donation and all, something like that. Anyway, I just
You know, the gala event is in September, so we have a lot of time to decide that.
Okay, so what would you like to do on that?
Do you want to bring it back next week, and we decide when we have the rest?
Shall we just recommend to council, we look at this again?
Yeah.
I mean, personally, I think if you're taking an ad, it's probably
Okay, let's do this
Be easiest way.
But that's, that's true, but it is the easiest way, but I think in light of the serious fire that they had out there, I think it'd be a goodwill gesture to do something a little bit more
And that's a problem, that's the celebrate that amidst them having to rebuild from the ashes.
Yeah, and I like the idea of maybe a person in the golf course, see if there's a donation in kind, or if we pay half or whatever.
Let's just have a recommendation, we look into something, you know, we won't, I don't think we have to decide on, on anything right now, but let's
We can look at it.
Let's consider looking at it. Yeah, okay. Do you want to just make your recommendation to that nature that we
But it cannot be with a word, it cannot be with a word donation, because then it doesn't
That we, that we do something to build a goodwill and, and support Red Crow College in some way?
Well, it's to support the 30 years anniversary of the Red Crow College, which is now split between two campuses.
Or do we just table it?
Yeah.
What did you know?
Graduate of the, of the Red Crow College. Right. I, I will, I will recommend, now, do we need to recommend this to council or just to
Yeah, we can make a recommendation to council as to what you want to do.
What's our deadline on this? Oh, we got some time, we got some time. Yeah, I'll, I'll recommend that council, um, consider supporting perhaps by advertisement or a donation of an item, oh, in kind, not a cash donation since it doesn't fit our policy, but, um, or perhaps
To support the 30th anniversary of the Red Crow College.
Yes, to support the, the Red Crow College Gala, Open House Gala, and, yeah, that's, that's my recommendation.
If it is, if it is an ad, it goes into the little pamphlet.
Right.
So it's there, and a lot of people can see the town, right?
So basically, this will come back to council. So Jill, did you get that? So all in favor of that, that we look at that? Thank you. Okay, that's, that's good. We've covered pool renovation, Citizen of the Year, so what happens on that? We, we only had one nomination for Citizen of the Year, and we didn't have any nominations for youth Citizen of the Year or for lifetime Citizen of the Year.
Mr. Chairman, has this been advertised, that we are taking names now?
I haven't seen it.
I've never seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it's been on, it was on the Facebook, and I, was it in the paper? I think, yeah, it was in the town, town's face. So, so apparently, did anything on, on the TV on that, was, was advertised on Channel 32? But apparently, people haven't seen it, so I guess the question is, do we want to leave it open? And, and do we want to request, you know, like, we, we get requests, in fact, we have one in here
Why don't we go to the high school and ask them to
And this is what I say, do we want to send something to the high school and the service clubs saying
And to the senior center.
Inviting them to, inviting them to give us some nominations.
Yes. Have a letter drafted.
Who is on the citizen committee? Citizen of the Year?
Mayor.
You are? And, you know, that's a lot of responsibility. Is that a big committee? Do you have a lot of helpers?
It's a little severer, isn't it?
Ultimately, and I understand, I understand there's a situation where sometimes you're not going to get nominations, but I would, I would support the recommendations of that committee, so I, you know, in the light that we don't have
But they have to have some nominations to start.
Well, I, I would, yeah, yeah, that's
Maybe we recommend to take it back to your committee.
I'd recommend to council that, that administration draft a
Oh, if I may, we might want to hear from administration before your recommendation.
Just to clarify on the committee, the committee only needs at the very end to go look through the nominations.
You need to
For this campaign, it's all they're invited
I think we almost need a committee to help gather nominations, you know.
Well, I think, I think if
We send out some invitations.
Send out an invitation to the Tanner Senior Center, to the high school, for the youth, uh, and to other groups like the United Church.
We'll go through, like, FCSS.
FCSS.
Rotary Club.
Yeah.
FCSS basically sponsors this whole
Right.
Whole
But send those letters out and, and ask them for
Recommendations.
Recommendations.
Okay, so we specifically invite, invite groups, high school, service clubs
Rotary Club, Service Club.
To submit nominations for Citizen of the Year, so
Make sure we send them a copy of the nomination papers.
Yeah, yeah, just like we get in our council packages from time to time, inviting us to, you know, nominate somebody for, for recognition, so
If we ask enough people that know Bangery, like, eventually he'll get nominated.
She's already been nominated.
No, I don't know.
You get it, you get it
Those guys are really
After the
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all, all in favor of Counselor Bangery's recommendation? Thank you, okay. So is that okay, Jill? We can have that sent out? Okay, let's move along, I think we're going to go over a little bit, but I'll try not to go over much.
Just to clarify that motion, was that a recommendation to administration or to council?
To administration.
To administration, yeah, I'm sorry.
Because I think we can go straight to administration on that one to, to do that. Okay, so just correspondence is, is what we need to cover. Alberta Seniors in Housing, I don't, it was a nice, a nice
Gesture.
Document, and actually, I wouldn't mind seeing that distributed to, like, some of the senior groups, because it had some nice, nice little checklist, question checklist in there, so
We should try to get, uh, what's it, Lenny, Lenny Fennell.
Lenny Fennell, yeah. Send him this information.
Are you sure that the CC didn't go to the seniors?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, especially with
Yeah, maybe we should just have a recommendation to administration to, to make a copy of that information available to the senior troops?
Send it to the seniors.
Okay.
I like that recommendation.
Okay, Counselor Barnes moves to recommend to administration to make that information that we received available to seniors organization to specifically.
To their board.
All in favor of that? Thank you. Is that okay, Jill? We do that, alright.
Now
As for the
Mr. Chairman, if you notice at the end of this document, it says you can download this publication, or this document is available on demand in multiple formats.
Right. So, you should be able, yeah, Jill?
Um, just to remind you, we need a motion to extend.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to extend?
Do you still need to vote on the other
Oh, um, let's see.
For the seniors.
I think we did.
We did.
We did vote on that. So motion, yeah, motion to extend, we have a motion. Now, Mayor?
A motion to extend, but to, for 15 minutes.
Okay, motion to extend for 15 minutes, we don't have to go that long? In favor? Thank you. Thank you, Jill. Okay, seniors, Historical Resources Foundation requesting nominations, that's just one of those things that we were just talking about.
Right.
So
Should we maybe recommend to administration to invite the, yeah, the Historical Society to tackle this one?
Let's see, who's on the Historical Society? Counselor Bangery. You want to just take that to the Historical Society, Counselor Bangery, and see if they're in, see if there's some interest? When's your meet next?
Surprise.
Historical Society.
21st.
Yeah, 21st.
Okay, what was, what was the deadline on that?
July 15th.
They have time.
So you got time? Yes, take that to them. Alright, okay. Town of Fox Creek, requesting letter of support, that's a very interesting one, not like anything I've seen before. They're, they're asking us to support them in a, in a legal battle with the hotels.